Good evening, Wilson community members. This is the Wilson Central School District 2023-2024 School Budget Hearing. I'm going to turn this hearing over to Carolyn Oliveri, our business administrator.
Thank you Superintendent Carter. Welcome on board members and anyone watching online. This is the time of year where we go over the budget before you come out to vote. Next Tuesday is the budget vote. So I typically go over this like there's some new people that don't know a lot about the budget. So if everybody here does, I might repeat something you already know, but I just want to make sure I do it for people that might be hearing for the first time. So today I'm going to present to you, and this will be online too after the meeting. You can go to the website and I have a budget page. Anything that I present to the board is on that page. So tonight we're going to look at the budget timeline, the calendar, the district goals. We're going to look at the revenue side of the budget for '23, '24, the tax cap limit. We're also going to explore the expenditure side of the budget in the required tri-component format. And I also like to talk about it by function. We'll go over what that means. I want to discuss any position changes for next year, review what we're doing with our federal funds, and then go over the proposition for the ballot next week and the candidate selection. So for those of you that are new, I just want you to realize that the budget process is a lengthy process. It really does begin in the summer. We begin with the board meeting with the administrators, and this is after a survey has gone out to our various stakeholders on what's important to them, what do they see we need in the future, things like that we might ask them. And we develop goals, and those goals are for the coming school year. And sometimes they might be a year or two out because they might take time or they might need resources to make them come true. So through the goal session is really when we're starting to develop and think about budgets, especially future budgets. And from there, it takes into the fall when the superintendent and I start meeting and discussing expenditures. How's it looking? What's going on? Are we meeting the goals that we set? Do we have the resources? How does the salaries look for next year? That's how I kind of start the budget. I roll over the salaries and we look at what that total looks like. And then after the holiday season is when we really start building that budget. The governor comes out with her proposals. We have the tax cap numbers to plug into the calculation. We start building the expenditure side and the revenue side together at the same time. And January, February, March, I'm always presenting to the board at the workshop and giving them updates. They get updates in their news and notes, but for the public, you're welcome to come to any of those budget update. And then in April, the board adopts the budget. So the takeaway from this is I really want you to understand that it is a long process that we take very seriously. After doing that process this year, the board is presenting to you a budget of $29,207.15. It's a budget-to-budget increase of 2.32%. The tax levy for next year is $13,019,27, and that's a 2.6% increase over last year's levy. And we are using $500,000 of appropriated fund balance. So when we look at the revenues for the district, the revenue percentage-wise is made up very consistently over the last several years. So about half our income comes from state aid, and this for the next budget year is at 52%. The taxes have typically been around 44% or 45% of our income. And then we have the fund balance, which is about 2%. And this other category, which is made up of some smaller items on the revenue side, we'll go over in a little more detail later, that's only 1% of the budget. And then the next slide, you can see that it's really been very consistent of how that revenue has been made up. You'll see that the tax levy percentage has been between 44% and 45%, the state aid between 51% and 53%, and then the other, and the fund balance, the ones and the 2%. So we have remained very consistent in the money that we receive from all those different areas on our revenue side of the budget. So I wanted to go into a little more detail about what's included on that revenue side. You've heard me say terms like state aid, and you might not know what that means. That is money we do get from the state, and there are several different categories. The biggest being foundation aid, and that is about $10 million of that $15 million you see on my slide. That is a formula developed a long time ago, never fully implemented until now. So in the last two years, Governor Hokel has implemented it and fully funded districts across the state. Wilson has been fully funded for several years, so we didn't know if that meant we were going to get a decrease, we were going to get no increase, but we have been receiving a 3% increase over the last two years. What's going to happen next year with the foundation aid? We're not sure. There's supposedly a committee developing to study and figure out how they want to fund that in the future. But that is a huge part of many school districts across the states, state aid. The other aids are known as expense-based aids. They're based on our expenditures throughout the previous year. So our expenditures right now in many of these categories will influence the amount of aid we receive next year in the categories. And these categories that I'm talking about are known as transportation aid. Obviously, the amount of money we spend this year in busing, we'll get a percentage of that in aid next year. Building aid has to do with any capital projects that we've had over the last several years, and we get a portion of the money we spend on those projects back over time. Textbook aid, library software, that's all based on our population, so there's a set amount of money we get per student. BOCES aid depends on how many services and costs that we incur with BOCES. In the previous year, we get a percentage of aid on that. Excess cost, private and public, that is money we spend on special ed students going out of district, either to a BOCES program or what's called a private program like Summit, HG Lewis, the ARC, programs like that. And those all make up in total what I refer to as state aid when I'm presenting. So our state aid estimate for next year is $15,231,488. And then we have the tax levy that we discussed is about 45% of the revenue. And how we come up with that starts with the formula of what are we allowed to levy? And we start working on that in January, and I have on the next slide the cap, what's called the tax cap calculation. So this is the maximum amount our district would be allowed to levy next year. And we wait for those figures to come out from the state that you see on this calculation, the tax-based growth factor and the allowable growth factor. Once we have those, our formula isn't as complicated as some of the other school districts' formulas. So we just have to use those numbers and also our pilot amounts. We subtract and we add, and we come up with the allowable amount that we can levy. Also, you'll see included in here is what's called a carryover, and that is money that you did not levy last year. Maybe a district decided not to levy to their maximum amount. Some of that, there is a formula for it, but some of it is allowed to be carried over, and we were allowed to carry over $195,386. So the maximum amount which the board could choose to levy actually was 4.32% this year. So when you hear 2% out there, when people speak of that, that's not the maximum amount a district is allowed. There's a formula, has to be calculated every year, and your district should be able to tell you what that is. So that was our maximum. What our board does is meet as a committee, a finance committee, and we start to discuss what is the budget looking like for next year? What programs are we trying to implement? How is the expenditure side looking? And we kind of work together to figure out what we might need to have the programs that we want to have here at Wilson. So the board decided the appropriate amount, which I have on the previous slide, was the $13,019,27,000 for next year. The other revenue you can see is a small amount. That is made up of admissions, any interest that we receive on our money, which now is a, we're receiving a decent amount of interest on some of our reserve balances. It could be tuition we might be getting for helping a student might come to our school. There's just a bunch of little revenue accounts that make up that total. The biggest influence on that amount from year to year is whether you're going to see us use any reserves, which in next year we are not projecting to use any. And then the interest of our reserve balances, we've seen it very low, and then we've seen it now this year creep up to a nice amount of earnings for us. So that is the revenue side of the budget. So the revenue and the expenditures have to balance, and like I said, we work on them together. We don't do one and then the other. They're kind of being built together. So the expenditure side of the budget, I'm required to show you in this tri-component format, and that means break out the expenditures into program, capital, and administration. So I am going to do that. Our expenditures are typically made up of the program expense. You can see on the next slide, 78% of our expenditures go to program. That means going to anything we do to educate the kids. And about 12% goes to capital, and about 10% goes to administration. And these have also remained very consistent over the last several years that I have been in this position. So on the next slide, you'll see I broke out the tri-component budget into the program, capital, and administration by function. So that means salaries, benefits, BOCES, contractual, those are all functions that we use in accounting. And this is nice and pretty and looks good, but it doesn't really tell you a lot. It's hard to talk about the budget on the expenditure side in this format. So I am presenting it to you, but I really would rather discuss it in terms of the functions and compare the functions from year to year because that's, that way you can really see what's changed. So if you go to the next slide by totals by function, you'll see I have all the functions on the side, and I've comparing this budget year to last budget year. What's changed? I think that's what you really want to know, why have those numbers changed? So we did go over this in one of our budget workshops, and I discussed the changes for all these functions, but I'll just go over them quickly. Salaries, of course, is just contractual obligations that the district has. Benefits, the change is largely due to the insurance. The amount of increase is 5% going into '23, '24, so that is taking up a lot of the increase there. BOCES, you can see, remained very flat, meaning kind of same year to year. We did have a decrease in the students going out to BOCES programs, our special ed students, but we also had some increases in central processing and the computer management that we get from BOCES. So those two kind of leveled off each other. Outside services, that's anything we contract outside of the district. You'll see that's our largest increase for next year. That has to do with students actually going to outside private placements has increased. We've talked about, we had three that just came in in January that were already going to outside placements, so we're expecting those to continue for next year, plus the students that we already had going. And that also includes, for the first time, the SRO being budgeted as a contractual item because we contract with the county sheriff, of course. So that is why that function, you'll see such an increase in that. The debt is just what we pay in principal and interest payments, and I expect those to remain relatively the same until the new project comes on. Utilities, I've budgeted an increase. I will tell you, I don't think the $427,000 I have budgeted for this year is enough. You know, we saw very high increases in July, August, September. Our prices were much higher, our expenditures were much higher in the utility area than I would have expected last February, March when I was budgeting. So I had to make up a little bit of money that I was short on, plus add the increase for the following year. Materials and equipment, it remains relatively the same. Transportation, we've discussed several times that we have the one-year extension at the CPI rate for this month, which I will know probably not till mid-June. So I'm estimating about 6%. And I also, you'll see that that number isn't a 6% increase, but I also am losing a bus for next year because one of our students will be graduating that takes a bus to a special program. So that kind of explains like how the numbers change. I think that's more relevant for you, and it's honestly easier to understand, I think. In the next slide, too, I just broke out the components. Total program capital and admin changes from year to year, I included two years prior. But we've already discussed by function what those increases in the numbers are made up of. So I don't think we really need to go over it again. Position changes. I always talk about any position changes for next year when I do this hearing. So we have three teachers retiring, one guidance counselor, one teacher aide, and one secretary. Many of those positions have already been posted, and we are planning to replace all of them. New staff. We may have a need for an additional aide in our 1211 class that we have here in the middle school. We're doing CSE meetings right now, and we're determining if any students would be joining that class, maybe students that already go to our school, or maybe students that are at outside placements maybe coming back. Maybe we've decided that they'd be a good fit for the class we have here. So if their IEPs require that we need additional help in that classroom, we will certainly provide that for them. The capital outlay project for next year is going to be made up of some flooring replacement throughout the middle school. Some items on our big capital project had to be removed due to the cost increase and everything that we see when any of us go to the store right now. But so we took one of those items that we had to remove to keep it under budget, and we moved it to the outlay project. So we'll be doing some flooring throughout the middle school wing. I believe that's, I have a picture of it on the next one. I believe that's the guidance. Home and careers is in that hallway. I kind of called the middle school. I think it's mostly middle school classes in there, yeah. And then we've also indicated part of the upper hallway where you see the green, we're going to put that out as an alternative. That way, if the base bid for the red hallway comes in under the money that we have for the capital outlay, maybe if they bid on the alternate, we might be able to get both of them done, kind of just like we did with the odd this year. We had the one in mind. We're definitely going to try to do this, but let's put this as an alternate, and the bids came in lower than what we needed, so we're going to be able to do both of them this year. So we'll continue that strategy into federal funds. Of course, they're not part of the budget, but just an update or reminder of that we still have six teachers, one social worker, four building-based subs on these federal funds. We continue to purchase various softwares or renew them. We are using that money to update Chromebooks, clear touch panels, desktops, anything that becomes out of date or isol, out of use, you know, no longer of use, especially those Chromebooks. They only last so long, so we can't keep them for years and years. They won't update anymore, sort of forces us to get new ones. We run a morning program and a summer program with that grant money. We have the Wilson Cares Program for staff and our students' families. Anybody interested in finding out about that? It's on our website. You can call Mrs. Pavon, she can help you. We really would love to see more families using that mental health program that we're providing. We've bought marching band equipment, musical instruments, and a new piano, and we have money for additional subcleaners, facilities, equipment, and supplies that we're purchasing through that grant. So what are you going to see when you come to vote next Tuesday? You're going to see Proposition 1, which is you will vote yes or no to the expenditure budget of $29,207,015 and allowing the district to raise the necessary taxes to meet that budget for next year. And you will also see candidate selection for the Board of Education. We have three seats up for election, and we have three candidates running. And those terms will be July 1st, 2023 to June 30th, 2026. We have Nathan Wass, RJ Seager, and Timothy F. Crop running for the board. We will have a meet the candidates night this coming Thursday at 5:00 here in the odd. If you would like to take, have questions for these board members who are looking to become a three, a new three-year term with our board for this election period. I think that's everything I have. Does anybody have any questions for me?
I just want to thank you for your diligence, Mrs. Oliveri, and your efforts to keep the tax levy as, you know, best we can and still provide the best education for our students and within our community. So thank you. It's a lot of work all year long.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Oliveri. Board members, anything else? Any questions, comments, concerns?
Well, this concludes the Wilson Central School District 2023-2024 Budget Hearing. Thank you for joining us this evening. Good evening, Wilson community members. This is the Wilson Central School District Board of Education meeting for Tuesday, May 9th, 2023. My name is Tim Carter. I'm the superintendent of schools, and welcome to the board meeting this evening. As I mentioned at the beginning of every board meeting, if you're here in person, you have the ability to make comment at the end of the meeting during our public comment section. If you're watching online or you're watching after the fact, because all of our board meetings are videoed and are recorded and put on our website. If you have questions, comments, and concerns, you have the ability to make a phone call to Mrs. Pavon or district clerk at 716-751-9399. Almost gave her the wrong phone number. So please take advantage of that. She can get whatever question, comment, or concern you have to the board. At this time, I will turn the board meeting over to President Waters.
Thank you, Superintendent Carter. Please stand and join me in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for its stance, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and thank you for coming this evening. Under B, approved meeting minutes dated April 25, 2023. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Under 2A, resolved that the Wilson Central School District Board of Education approved the following items, B through D, in the financial consent agenda as submitted by the administration. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. We're going to pause on number three for a minute. Under number four, personnel resignations. A, accept the resignation of Bridget Holbert, food service helper, monitor effective April 28, 2023, for personal reasons. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Board members, prior to 5A, I would ask the superintendent to please say a few words about Mr. Galgovich.
Thank you. Mr. Galgovich, you join me in the open section here behind Mrs. Stewart.
Board of Education members, it's my pleasure to reintroduce to you Mr. Galgovich, completing his fourth year at Wilson Central School District. And I can tell you that when you enter in a position as a high school principal, it's not easy. For me personally, I thought it was easier when I was the high school principal in Niagara Weefield because I was the, I was 12 principal in 13 years. So they called me 1213. So I had nothing but good things could happen because there was really no one that stuck around long enough. So I was there for five years, so I guess good things were able to happen. It's not easy taking over a building for someone who's been here for over 20 years, 22 or 25, I can't remember exactly, 23, I had it right in the middle. It's not easy. Buildings, functions a certain way for 23 years, and you're coming in, trying to not screw it up as best as possible. I think Mr. Galgovich has done a good job getting to know staff members. His first year, he started in July, and seven months later, he closed the school down and went to remote instruction. So that was his, that was his welcome to Wilson. And he was able to navigate COVID his first year, navigate the high school to remote instruction, which was not even easy, return to school with hybrid instruction, and then finally the welcome back of the students full-time. And it was not an easy time for any of us, but being a new administrator, leaning on his colleagues, and he's developed some great relationships with his administrators and his staff members. And I know as he moves forward, he's going to continue to build those relationships with community members, with the staff. He's done a lot of work with Amy Sealy with our high school AIAS process and our alignment with curriculum and creation courses and things like that. There's still a lot of work we have to do, but you know, now that he's been here for a few years, that work is starting to move forward. And board members, as you can tell from the next, it is my pleasure to recommend Paul Galgovich for tenure.
Thank you, Superintendent. Board members, under 5, personnel, A, tenure appointment upon the recommendation of Timothy Carter, superintendent of schools. Paul Galgovich is hereby appointed on tenure to the tenure area of district administrator. The tenure service shall begin, excuse me, July 1, 2023. The appointee is professionally certified as a school district leader. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Congratulations.
Paul did such a great job. He gets to stay up there because he has one, couple, two. Jake.
Superintendent Carter and Board of Education, it's my pleasure to recommend to you guys that they've been in tenure in the area of special education. He did his fourth year here at Wilson. Very proud of what he's done since he's been here. Works really hard to build quality relationships with his students, his families. He's reflective, he's always open to suggestions, and he's always willing to try new things, try to get the kids as engaged as possible. He's got a very easygoing demeanor and personality, and I think that works well with his roles, especially as a teacher, as he also has to work with a lot of other teachers that have different personalities and abilities about going about the day. So he fits in really well here. He's done a great job so far, and I wish him all the best, and hopefully he has a long career of service.
Thank you, Mr. Galgovich. Board members, item B, tenure appointment upon recommendation of Timothy Carter, superintendent of schools. Jacob Vivian is hereby appointed on tenure to the tenure area of special education. The tenure service shall begin on September 6, 2023. The appointee is professionally certified in the Students with Disabilities Grade 1 through 6, severe or multiple disabilities annotation, and Students with Disabilities Grade 7 through 12 certification area. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Congratulations.
Our next tenure recommendation is for Aaron Starr. Aaron, if you'd come down. Mr. DiDatti, the elementary principal, wrote something prior to leaving us, and I asked Mrs. Schaus to talk a little bit about Aaron and read what Mr. DiDatti said.
Mrs. DiDatti, you want to be the chair of the year? So we would like to congratulate Erin Starr for taking our position. Karen has been a great addition to the special education department. She came off of the younger years of experience that had to contribute to our performance. Started her career as a consultant teacher and has gone to be a post teacher in the year. She's also worked in our morning AIS program and her summer AIS program. She's also a very, very worker. I hope she will continue to be in. Erin has been my page, my designated member since she came along.
The H.
But we, I don't know if you asked her if she's on it, and I appreciate that. You also share a love of fashion music and media management. And so I appreciate her and would love to ask.
Thank you, Mrs. Schaus. Board members, item C, tenure appointment upon recommendation of Timothy Carter, Superintendent of Schools. Erin Starr is hereby appointed on tenure to the tenure area of special education. The tenure service shall begin on September 6, 2023. The appointee is professionally certified in the students, in, in the Students with Disabilities birth through 2, grade 2, excuse me, and Students with Disabilities Grades 1 through 6 certification area. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried. Congratulations.
Right, Superintendent Carter and Board of Education members, it's my privilege to recommend Tammy Duckery for tenure in the area of math. And he's completed her fourth year here with us, high school's math teacher. Actually started off as a long-term sub for us and they shared a position from there. Tammy's done a great job. I've always encouraged her to, you know, think outside the box and take risks and try new things. And I think every observation that I've had of her, she's done that. She was coming to the free camp and was a little bit nervous because she was going to suffer. And she's never done before. It's usually outside the park. So she does a really great job. She's also the senior class co-advisor this year, so taking on some additional responsibilities with that. And I think she's done a really great job so far. And I know she'll continue to do great things for us here in Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. Galgovich. Board members, item D, tenure appointment upon recommendation of Timothy Carter, Superintendent of Schools. Tammy Duckery is hereby appointed on tenure to the tenure area of mathematics, 7 through 12. The tenure service shall begin on September 6, 2023. The appointee is initially certified in mathematics grades 5 through 9 and mathematics 7 through 12 certification area. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Congratulations.
Okay. We were going to pause for cupcakes right there, but I think it makes more sense to do the next two appointments because my two favorite things I love doing is granting tenure and hiring new people. It's a lot of fun. So we're going to, we're going to do two appointments and then a third long-term sub. And after that, we'll take a break. We'll have cupcakes. And then you are welcome to stay as long as you want or leave. I think it's, Mr. Benton, you're first. Wyatt, come on down.
What big family you're Wyatt. Oh, Board of Education and everybody here this evening, this is Wyatt Martin. And Wyatt, we're hoping that we're able to prove this player as a middle school, high school technology teacher. Wyatt is a resident and graduate of Start Point High School, of Start Point District, and of Full State University, Scientology. Full State University, obviously is certified in technology education. Wyatt really knows what's going on in Wilson here because he's stood a cloud here with Al Starpeen, this player, this year. So he knows what's going on in that classroom, and he brings some really good ideas as well because he is a small business owner that specializes in contracting as well as agribusiness. So it's a direction that we want to go with our technology program as well. So we just have some experience in that. He has a strong love of teaching and still in character in our students as well. And we're excited to present Wyatt to the board for.
Thank you, Mr. Benton. Item E, Wyatt Martin is middle, middle school, high school technology teacher effective September 6, 2023. Wyatt is initially certified with technology education credentials and is appointed to the tenure area of technology at Step 1 CB with benefits for the Wilson Teachers Association Agreement. This appointment includes a four-year probationary period beginning on September 6, 2023 through September 6, 2027, or first day of student attendance in September of 2027. Probationary end date is contingent upon the individual receiving an overall APPR rating of effective or highly effective in at least three of the four preceding years. Probationary employees receiving an ineffective APPR rating in their final year of probation will not be eligible for tenure at that time. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Welcome to Wilson, Wyatt.
Mr. Galgovich?
Right, Superintendent Carter, Board of Education, my pleasure to introduce Cassidy Geis to you with the hopes that you will approve her appointment as a probationary middle school, high school art teacher. Cassidy is a graduate from Newfane, so won't hold that against her. But she does come with experience. She did have a long-term supposition at Newfane High School for coming over here, and Cassidy is currently in a long-term supposition with us here. She took over for Glenn Uli, who retired in January. Since being here, she's done a great job of kind of picking up. It's been a pretty seamless transition for, for students. Every time I walk by or pop in, everyone is engaged in what they should be doing. Everyone seems to be having fun with what we're doing in the arts. Cassidy seems to be really good herself as well. So she's, she also wants to, to Full State. I know she's very passionate about our thinking, proven data-driven process, which is great and wise. So again, Cassidy Geis, hopefully we hear her, she'll be with us for a long time.
Thank you, Mr. Galgovich. Item F, Cassidy Geis is middle school, high school art teacher effective September 6, 2023. Cassidy is initially certified in visual arts and is appointed to the tenure area of art at Step 1 CB with benefits for the Wilson Teachers Association Agreement. This appointment includes a four-year probationary period beginning on January 30, 2023 through January 30, 2027, due to successful completion of half-year of service as 1.0 FTE long-term substitute high school art teacher. Probationary end date is contingent upon the individual receiving an overall APPR rating of effective or highly effective in at least three of the four preceding years. Probationary employees receiving an ineffective APPR rating in their final year of probation will not be eligible for tenure at that time. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Welcome, Cassidy. Yep. We'll take a break. Board members, item G, Madison Cokely is 1.0 FTE long-term substitute elementary special education teacher for the WAT, excuse me, for the WTA agreement effective May 3, 2023 through May 30, 2023. Substitute teacher has met New York State fingerprint clearance. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. As the superintendent mentioned, we'll, we'll pause here for refreshments if anybody would like them. Thank you. Board members, under 6, A, resolve that the Wilson Central School District Board of Education approve the following summer 2023 hours for staff, items B through G. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Under 7, A, resolve that the Board of Education of Wilson Central School District hereby agrees to entering into the attached contract with Erie One Bosse's for a five-year period commencing on May 10, 2023 to authorize the Western New York Regional Information Center to furnish certain computer services to the district pursuant to education law 1954 JJ for an amount not to exceed $49,777.80 and authorized, authorizes 60 monthly payments to, to be made to Erie One Bosse's in the amount not to exceed $829.63 per month. Be it further resolved that the Board of Education of the Wilson Central School District hereby authorizes the board president or the district clerk to execute the contract on behalf of the district. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Item B, resolve that the Board of Education of, of Wilson approves the creation of a community education program for the Wilson Central School District community. The Board of Education believes and commits itself to the concept of community education, a concept that learning is a lifelong process and that the resources and facilities of the Wilson School District should be made available to all citizens of the community. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Item C, approve the agreement between the Wilson Central School District and Jennifer Pavon, Superintendent, Secretary, District Clerk for the period July 1, 2023 through June 30, 2028. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Item D, award the 2022-2023 Dr. John A. Byrne Scholarship to graduating senior Drew Dable. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. We have nothing, nothing under policies. 9, transportation, A, approve the private rokeal transportation request of Ms. Dawn Dirig for her child to legally go to Lutheran school for the 2023-2024 school year. No transportation requests are granted based on the 15-mile transportation limit, and available seating exists on the bus. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any question? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Superintendent Carter for conference report.
Thank you, Board members. I had the opportunity on April 28th to attend a rural schools board meeting. Less of a conference, more of a, you know, a board meeting type of atmosphere. We made a bunch of recommendations and legislative priorities. And it's great that you allow me to be on the inside of those conversations and I get to hear what's going on in Albany firsthand. Many of those updates, I try to put into their news and notes, but I do appreciate the fact that the board allows me to go to those, those update meetings. They are currently holding rural schools forums all over New York State. I will keep you posted if they have one coming to this area. The closest one is the other side of Syracuse right now. They're in the process of continuing scheduling in between now and the, the end of the school year. I'll keep you posted if there's one close enough that we think we could go to. It's just basically they're going around talking about rural schools' impact on the budget process. And now that the budget's out, things that they were able to, to be able to gain in this year's legislative process. And that's the, my report on that board meeting on April 28th.
Thank you, Superintendent Carter. Under item B, Mrs. Sealy, you have a report?
So right before Easter, I attended ASCD Annual Conference in Denver. This was a wish list item that Mr. Carter had been doing over the years. And this one might interest us because of actually the conference instituted that was the Friday before the conference, which was a state-owned conference with a highly respected curriculum developer, education in education, Jamie Kai. I actually read one of his books when I was in college a few years ago. So, um, so it was really just a great weekend. I just wrote down all the conferences or all the talks or keynotes or panel discussions that I attended throughout the few days that I was there with a little bit of information. The, the overall themes were pretty much using transferable skills, having students be able to use transferable skills throughout my school and upon graduation, having a community. Have input on what those transferable skills would be. What do we want to see our students graduate with? Exit skills, communication skills. There's a lot of them. And also the theme of student voice. And that seems to be a recurring theme with a lot of conferences that are around. So I just want, if you have any questions or asking about them, with all of them, they were very informative. So I, again, I'm extremely grateful to Mr. Carter and the board for allowing me to attend this conference. This figures in, it's like full conversations with a lot of educators from all over the country, opened my eyes to how I can utilize my role to benefit our student staff and our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Sealy. Under 11, use of facility requests, A, Ken Moore soccer requests use of Hutchinson Field, turf, high school play fields, turf, athletic equipment, soccer nets, and stadium lighting on May 18, 2023 from 7:00 AM to 10:00 AM for New York State West State Cup Soccer Game. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. 12 is for informational purposes. We're going to skip 13. Trustee Stewart has nothing to report. Student trustee Miller, do you have anything this, this evening?
Oh, yes. So we had prom, and it was amazing. It took place at the World Tour thing in North Tonawanda. And there was a great attendance. I didn't expect that many people to be there, and that was great. There was great food, a photo booth, a DJ, and everybody was on the dance floor, so that was fun. On May 16th, there was a blood drive in the L C from 11:30 to 5:30. That's all I have today.
Thank you, trustee Miller. Superintendent Carter?
Thank you. I have my general thank you to everyone who works in Wilson Central School District for doing what they do every single day for our students, for our community. And it's much appreciated. Congratulations to our four tenure recipients. They officially don't. They officially don't receive tenure until the first day of school next year. So they still have to, you know, walk the line, of course. But I appreciate everything they've done. And actually, that entire group was here, I was here when we hired them. So it's awesome, four years later to see them and how they've grown. I want to congratulate Drew Dable on his scholarship. Our two new hires, Wyatt and Cassidy. Both interviews that came to me were outstanding. So I'm expecting great things from them. I want to congratulate and thank Mrs. Pavon. As you probably heard, we signed her on for another five years. So she stuck with me at least 2028. I put down here the community education program. For some people, this might be the first they've heard of it. We've had already phone calls and emails going around. A community education program, the board and myself and our business official, Mrs. Oliver, have been talking about it. As one of our goals is to make this a community school also and have evening programs to be able to offer to the residents. They do pay taxes and they should have the ability to use our facilities. The vote tonight was just a commitment that the board was going to move forward with this process. There's just so many other little planning details that are going to happen and that'll start trickling out pretty soon. I was going to go through all the staffing. We're about 20% done for this year. So we still have a lot to go. But I do want to make mention that that community survey that was sent out for our elementary principal, that'll be closing very soon. If you haven't had a chance to take a look at it, please go back in your emails and check it. It was sent out to staff, it was sent out to administrators, board members, and all families of the elementary to decide what the qualities they want in our next building principal. On the 18th of May, the hiring committee, which was, they haven't heard this yet, but they're going to get that email tomorrow, but on 18th of May, we're going to gather together and start looking at those qualities and developing questions based upon those and other ideas that we have. So those questions that we all set. Our hope is that we're going to have someone in place for the June 13th board meeting, which is the first board meeting in June, and be able to introduce somebody to you. Board members, it is my pleasure to present to one of our board members a recognition from the New York State School Board Association's recognition program. On behalf of the New York State School Boards Association, myself and the Board of Education, we want to present a board appreciation award to Tracy Kent, Wilson Central School District, for participation in New York State School Boards Association leadership courses and leadership development training programs. And she has totaled 75 points in that program for the 2023 school year. And it's signed by the president and executive director of New York State School Boards. So congratulations.
Thank you so much.
And finally, and I know I'm over my two and a half minutes, but I've got to say finally, the budget vote is May 16th. It is from 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Location is the Zip Gym foyer. And this Thursday at 5:00 o'clock is the meet the candidate night. Please come out and meet the board members that are planning on running for Board of Education seats this year. And that's my board report.
Thank you, Superintendent Carter. Trustee Kent, thank you for putting in some extra hours in this high-paying volunteer position. We appreciate it. It's always good to get extracurricular in. It's not required of board members, but it's very much appreciated when you go out and you spend a little extra time taking courses or attending seminars and that kind of thing. Superintendent Carter, I just want to reaffirm our belief that it's important of your involvement in the Rural Schools Association. Our numbers, as far as rural schools, as far as population, is nowhere near that of the big five. But I'm certainly a firm believer that there is strength in numbers and that we do have the ear of some that should be listening to us. And there's no better a voice than a collective voice. So I appreciate you doing that for us. I know it takes time out of your life as well. During the month, extra month-long budget fiasco in Albany, which quite frankly, there's no excuse for because it's nothing but political games and tail twisting. The state comptroller thought it appropriate to come out and tell us that there's a financial Armageddon coming with the sunset of federal funds. I think we're all aware at this table at least that that was a three-year deal. We've got personnel here that is funded through those federal grants. Why we like to think that we could maintain some of those positions, quite frankly, is probably not realistic. I certainly don't need the comptroller to tell me that, that there is some type of financial Armageddon coming that was created, but maybe not the state government, but certainly the federal. And if we all think about it, not that I want to bring up bad blood, but it was two years of lockdowns that created that need for the federal fund and assistance. And in my opinion, now I'm not an educator, but they did 10 years worth of damage in those two years, which is disgusting. There is a budget vote again, May 16th. Residents, I would ask you to support that budget. It's a very sound and financially good budget for what's been required of the program that's happening in your school district. I ask for your support. I'm very appreciative of incumbents, trustee Seager and Crop looking to regain their seats and for newcomer Nathan Wass on his intent to run for the Board of Education. That's all I have, board members. Do you have anything to add?
I would just like to comment on the state. I've said this probably at every meeting. In their wisdom, they are in the process of curtailing the use of natural gas for heating or anything else we want to use it for. You know, homes, buildings under seven stories will no longer be allowed to have gas furnaces, gas hot water heaters, or anything like that. This is starting in 2026 and this is only in the beginning. And my question to schools are, what are schools going to do? And Mr. Herman, you may know a lot more on this than I do, but how do we heat this school with an electric boiler? How do we generate electricity when the power goes out with an electric generator which doesn't exist? I think every school in Western New York, every family in Western New York, there's a protest starting, it's been online. And for some unknown reason, I don't think that people are standing up for this enough because it's going to affect everybody. It's going to affect your taxes, it's going to affect your home bills, it's going to affect your gasoline, it's going to affect everything. So I think people should stand up for this and really fight against this because yes, we have a problem with the environment. I'm not against that, but I think they're just acting too quickly on this. They're putting the horse before, or the cart before the horse. And sometimes the cart strips up the horse. And I think that's what's going to happen with this. So that's my spiel for tonight. And you may hear me say it again in the coming years, but I think it warrants saying.
Thank you, trustee Crop. Anyone else, board members? I will open up for public forum. If anybody would like to address the board, please state your name and address prior and keep your comments brief. Okay, onward and upward. We do have need for an executive session. I will entertain a motion for executive session. I'm sorry, I need to say beforehand, it's strictly personnel items. Can I have a motion? Thank you. Second.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're in executive session. Thank you for coming. Be safe getting home.